Next up is Debbie Wolf.
Thank you for the thing that's been said thus far.
Okay, thank you.[8.86][8.86](APPLAUSE). Since we're doing all public comments, we have some others in here as well. Next up is Reverend John Wright. Or should I say Very Reverend?
Thanks for hearing me this evening. I know most of you and I admire your commitment to our city and your dedication in making Salisbury as inclusive a place as any in America. But I do have to stand here and object to the presence of Reverend Franklin Graham being here in our city. I'm not going to address his presence here and regarding our LGBTQIA+ siblings, others will do that. But I do want to be clear, Reverend Graham has made derogatory remarks, not only against LGBTQ folks, but other minorities as well, which I also find troubling. Conservative CNS News in 2014 reported that Reverend Graham referred to Islam as "a religion of war" and said that Muslims and Christians could not worship the same God. In his Facebook page on November 18th, Reverend Graham said, "It's sad to see a church open its doors to the worship of anything other than the one true God of the Bible, who sent His Son, the Lord Jesus Christ, to earth to save us from our sins." This was in regard to his criticism of a Muslim prayer service heard held at the National Cathedral, an Episcopal church established by a congressional charter more than 100 years ago in Washington DC. The Pittsburgh Post-Gazette in 2014 wrote this article that indicated that the US Army withdrew an invitation to speak at a 2010 prayer gathering amid a backlash over his denunciations of Islam as an evil religion. He has dismissed Islam's veneration of multiple divine manifestations, saying, "None of their 9,000 gods is going to lead to salvation." The North Carolina chapter of the NWACP objected to Reverend Graham's comments focusing on gay marriage and abortion during the 2012 presidential campaign. And in Newsweek in 2021, more than 16,000 Christians signed a petition calling for him to be fired as the head of Samaritan's Purse and his father's name-sexed nonprofit Billy Graham Evangelistic Association after he endorsed President Donald Trump's conspiracy theories that the election was rigged or stolen. He said in 2020 that he believed former President Trump when he said that the election was rigged or stolen. He has referred to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, that is, the Mormons, as a cult. While it is too late to change anything about Reverend Graham's presence here in our city, we should be clear that he does not represent the values and opinions of large swaths of Christians, nor the majority of the people in our city. His presence here will not help to further the slogan that I received from the city and which I proudly display on my car: "We are all equal here." Thank you.[245.12][245.12](APPLAUSE).
Next up is Deborah Willey.
My name is Deborah Willey. I'm here about the $300 fire and fee and the increase in the water, sewer, and trash. I'm a homeowner. I'm also a senior citizen. I live in Avalon, the villages of Avalon, where there are 83 homeowners there on fixed incomes. The burden that this would put on those residents that are on Social Security only, I just would like the council to take that into consideration for the elderly that are, other than Avalon, there's other senior citizens. In Salisbury, they are going to struggle with this. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[302.33][302.33](APPLAUSE). Next up is Austin Whitehead.
My name is Austin Whitehead. I am the president of the Coastal Association of Realtors. I'm also with Whitehead Real Estate Associate Broker and the owner of Whitehead Rental Management. First, I appreciate all your time here and everything that you do, the fire department, all that they do, and I believe this ordinance has good intentions, or both ordinances have good intentions, the fire and the water increases. But like some of the others that have spoken before me, the timing of this is, it just all comes together. It looks to be very small, but when you add other things up, I won't go into what others have said, but some of the things that were not mentioned are interest rates that are coming through. Homeowners have lost in the last year $107,000 of buying power just due to interest rates. That alone, with the increase in payments, them trying to find housing with this low inventory market is a huge setback for them. And for the rental individuals, rental owners, that have to endure these fees that then we all know get passed down eventually to the tenant, they're seeing all these fees come down to them. And a lot of rental properties, we manage mostly rentals for individuals that may only have one or two, they're not large owners of rental properties. A lot of rental investment properties have to be financed with adjustable rate mortgages. A lot of these mortgages that were recently received in the last couple of years or refinanced in the last couple of years only have one, three, and five-year terms before they adjust. And a lot of these properties were received on maybe a 3% to 4% interest rate, and they're going to soon adjust to 7% to 8%, which is going to be a huge burden that will then eventually be passed on. So, again, I believe the intentions are well, but just the timing of things, I think we need to look at all things together. Thank you so much for your time.[441.06][441.06](APPLAUSE).
Next up is Mark Delancy.
My name is Mark Delancy, Executive Director of Salisbury PFLAG, retired disabled veteran and resident of Salisbury. I'm here to talk to you tonight concerning the incidents of the God is Love Tour. I will echo some of the things that Reverend John Wright did say, but also I'm going to say a few other things. One, there's been a lot of voices here tonight, and you're going to hear a few more voices concerning the majority of them about frustrations, disappointment, and sadness wrapped around this event. For numerous and many decades and hundreds and thousands of years, we have been persecuted and we have been marginalized, the LGBTQ community, along with other minority communities have been marginalized, and we are tired of it. In that situation, some of the things that are being represented or being put forward through Reverend Graham have already been stated and will be stated, and that's not why I'm here. One of the things that I want to state tonight is that while those voices of sadness, frustration, and obstacles of disappointment will be present tonight, one of the things I want to represent is the fact that there is a solution and possible way through this. While it is now too late to oppose Reverend Graham to be here, or to listen to him and how he's going to pose this as a concert, is too late. But one of the things that I do want to iterate and state is that the city has been taking on a lot of responsibility when it comes to sponsorships, when it comes to hosting, when it comes to partnering with organizations and nonprofits, whether that's the Pride Parade, whether that's Juneteenth, whether that's the Folk Festival, or any other event that seems to happen here in the city. I understand and appreciate the city's perspective and appreciate the city's desire in trying to make this a much more large area of population in which these areas and events are accepted. However, you are the governing body of this city, and I would like to offer a solution of neutrality. Meaning that I understand everybody wants to take on the perspective of the moral high ground. And the moral high ground, for me, doesn't fit Reverend Graham. Reverend Graham's moral high ground does not fit me. So where do we stand? The city should, and I request, for the future going on, that the city take on a position of neutrality, meaning that as long as they fill out the permit, as long as they fill out and pass out the fire and safety regulations, events are allowed to be held and let the hate crimes, and let the city and the state and federal regulations and laws supersede to take over and let the First Amendment rights take on. It is the city's responsibility to make sure that all events are possible, not that all events should happen. I hope that this is a possibility that happens in the future, even though I will not, and I encourage anyone who takes my stand to not encourage Reverend Graham's hatred, Reverend Graham's bigotry, and Reverend Graham's stance on Christianity, and hope that I live in a city that I can truly represent, that I help put up the flags every month, every June, when they say that we are all equal here, that it actually means we are all equal here. Thank you.[693.25][693.25](APPLAUSE).
Next up is Linda Gassell. Did I say that right?
I just want to iterate on also, I live at Avalon Retirement Community, and iterate what Debbie Willey said. All of our residents there, it is a 55-plus community, however, the, most of the elderly that live there are 75 to 90 years old, and they are on a fixed income, so I would like to, for you to, excuse me, for you to keep that in mind also. And also about the water and sewer rates, they do have to pay their own water and sewer bill quarterly, and that would also not be a good thing for them, being on a fixed income. We thank you for your time.
Thank you.[781.44][781.44](APPLAUSE). Next is Rosie Bean.
Good evening, Representative of the City Council. My name is Rosie Bean, and I am here on behalf of Salisbury PFLAG. Please excuse my speech impediment. I am a deaf, disabled individual and also part of the LGBTQIA+ community. As a non-binary person, I'm going to reiterate some what my distinguished colleagues have said tonight. And I also believe Salisbury is a city of love, and we should not stand with hate and divisiveness that are coming. But I would also like to reiterate that everybody has their own belief to the First Amendment rights, but I do not believe the city of Salisbury should let this continue. I know it's too late to go back on the issue right now, but I do not believe the city of Salisbury should have promoted this with the Franklin Graham Tour. And I'm going to leave you with this quote from the amazing trans activist Martha P. Johnson on equality. How many years has it taken people to realize that we are all brothers, sisters, and human beings and the human race? How many years do we have to fight? Thank you, the City Council, for letting me speak this evening, and thank you for everybody for fighting with us, and we hope to see you in June at the Pride Salisbury Festival. Thank you once again.[890.07][890.07](APPLAUSE).
Next up is Mary Gibson.
I'm one of your senior citizens in Salisbury. When I first moved here 29 years ago, I guess I got a shock when I got both a county tax bill and a city tax bill. I understand that the city tax bill is to cover both police and fire. Then I had one medical emergency after paying my taxes for 29 years. The ambulance came, and guess what? Of course, there was a charge for it, even though I paid for it already for 29 years with my taxes. So here we go again. I'm on a fixed income, I'm 80 years old. I've noticed a lot of the older women and men living in the city that own their own homes, I can't afford to even maintain or paint the outside. It's tight. There's not a lot of money. Everything is going up. My neighbor told me about this. Then I walked to my mailbox, opened my mail, and found out, guess what? My house insurance is going up because now it costs more to rebuild it, its replacement value. Now you come up and you think $300 isn't very much. When you're living on Social Security, $300 is a hell of a lot. And when you raise the water and sewer constantly, where's that money coming from? I'm 80 years old. I've recently had a heart bypass. I can't go to work. You keep taking more and more, and everybody's got their hands out because we got a little bit of a raise in Social Security. We can't pay it, we can't maintain our houses, we can't afford to hire someone to help us maintain our houses. What are you doing? At least if you're going to do this, exempt everybody over 65 that lives in their primary residence, at least have some mercy. Thank you.[1035.83][1035.83](APPLAUSE).
Next up is Joanne Justice.
My name is Joanne Justice, and I am currently an employee of the City of Salisbury. After the comments which were made at the last council work session, I am embarrassed, humiliated, and saddened to be associated with this organization. It was stated in the last council work session that the Billy Graham Association is known as an anti-LGBTQ hate group. The definition of hate group is a social group that advocates and practices hatred, hostility, or violence to a designated sector of society. By no means is the Billy Graham Association spew hatred or hostility, and definitely not violence. Viewing homosexuality as a biblical standard does not qualify organizations to be listed as a hate group. We follow the principles of the Bible which state this opinion. One of our presidents and founding fathers, John Adams, stated that "Our country was founded as a republic for a religious and moral people. Therefore, as covered under the First Amendment, we have the freedom and right to religion and speech." In your elected positions, your power comes from the people, and you must uphold the Constitution. You cannot govern by your feelings. You cannot ban a specific group because it doesn't fit your agenda. With your recent comments, you have done nothing but create division to pin us against each other, and you have incited hatred. To some of the council members who openly and publicly stated that events like this should never happen again, are you stating that the message of God's Word and hope should never take place in downtown Salisbury? Your willingness to assist the city administration in making sure something like this never happens again, what are your intentions for preventing this type of event to occur in the future? Are you stating that Christians should not be allowed to gather and worship because their religious beliefs go against your constituents of the LGBT community? The definition of religious discrimination is treating individuals differently because of their religious beliefs and practices and/or their request for accommodation. These assumed actions are a direct infraction of discrimination against the Christian community. What about your Christian constituents? 64% of the US population are Christians, and 7% of the population is made up of the LGBTQ community. Do you choose to only listen to 7% of your constituents and ignore the others? With the month of June just around the corner, the City of Salisbury proudly flies flags at state: "We are all equal here." My question is, are we? Because my right to freedom of religion and speech is just as important as one's choice as a member of the LGBTQ community. Where is my equality? Where is my fellow Christians' equality? And why are we being portrayed as villains? Another thought of the five polling places that the elections take place in for the City of Salisbury, three of those locations are churches. How come the City of Salisbury is able to use the churches for polling, but the churches are not allowed to practice their beliefs downtown? As Christians in the community, we are willing to stand up and make our voices heard. If you choose to fly the pride flag, why can't you fly the Christian flag? If you choose equality for all, don't exclude us. We will not condone the behaviors portrayed in the LGBT community, and we should never be expected to celebrate the events represented by pride celebrations. Perhaps the Christian community is offended by these celebrations, and isn't that why all of this has actually started anyway? Someone was merely offended by someone else's beliefs? If you choose to promote the upcoming pride events on the city's Facebook page, why are you not able to promote the Tidewater Tour on that same page? What protocols are in place by the city to prevent discrimination against one group, yet promote another? Are you able to produce the documentation of the original Facebook post since it has been removed to fulfill the FOIA standards? You see, Ronald Reagan once said, "Freedom is a fragile thing. It must be fought for and defended constantly by each generation." Are you willing to fight and defend freedom and liberties for everyone? If you are not, I'm not sure that you are in the right positions of authority. The concept of liberty is not man's idea, but God's idea. We choose to spread the gospel and love of Jesus Christ. He was the only man of perfection to walk the face of this earth and extend mercy, grace, and love. He was sacrificed on a cross and resurrected from the grave to cover all of our sins. As much as I and my fellow Christians try, we will never come close to a life free from sin. We are only saved by the grace of salvation and have received mercy for an eternity with Him. I would encourage you to do some soul searching and choose to accept Him as your Savior. Please join me along with Franklin Graham and the newsboys for a hopeful message of God's love, grace, and mercy on May 4th. Thank you.[1385.30][1385.30](APPLAUSE).
Next up is Michael Webster.
Give me a second, I gotta pull this one up. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hi, my name is Michael Webster. I'm a city resident and taxpayer, and I agree with a lot of the comments that are being set up here, but I'm going to take a little bit more painful and different direction in this. I think the point of what's going on and why people are upset, even if they're not really saying it, is that we are now paying for the sins of the previous city administration, and we are paying for years of public money going to vanity projects and being essentially wasted on things that don't actually increase the quality of life or benefit the average Salisbury citizen. So as it stands, we are being asked to pay $300 per household, $250 per lot, and $50 per apartment unit, yet at the same time, I'm not seeing any meaningful plan to address the years of abuse of the county for not paying their fair share, whether they are legal actions, which is what we honestly should be considering, and thank you for those of you shaking your heads yes, because, again, this is the quiet part, right? So before we start standing up and asking everybody in this room to pay an additional $300 or $50 for the property, for the apartment owners, I think that we need to actually take a step backwards and look at what the root of this problem is. The county doesn't contribute, the residents of the county don't contribute, the previous administration gave hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax breaks that have really long tails to property developers that are putting up gigantic buildings in downtown Salisbury and elsewhere. Why are we looking at the already bloated taxes that I and everybody else in this room are paying? I actually came up here, I was anticipating on being fully in support of it because I have friends that are on the fire department, and I'm sick and tired of watching them moonlight and work extra hours in order to make ends meet. It's not just, and it's not right. However, after listening to the several concerned senior citizens, we have to choose other ways. So, thank you.[1551.11][1551.11](APPLAUSE).
Next up is Wart Wolf.
My name is Wart Wolf. I've been a resident of Salisbury for the past 50 years. My wife and I have dedicated ourselves to the improvement of the Newtown historic history. My wife was one of the instrumental individuals that developed the historic history. I, here tonight, this avalanche of ordinances that this is buried in, the idea of the, what is it, 2797 ordinance regarding the $300 fee to residents of Salisbury for taxes for the fire and safety issues, which by all the other testimony I've heard tonight, needs to be dealt with in the county. We pay our fair share of taxes. We pay double taxes. We pay county taxes, we pay city taxes, and they add up to a considerable amount of money. I am now a senior citizen. I'm unable to do what I once did. I'm a retired building contractor, and I own rental property. And I can see $50 that would be placed on my burden, on my fence, because it's where it would go. I'm not going to pay it just to help them out by daylight. And I had to pay $300, can't afford it now. I probably came because it's another burden that I don't need to face. So I've heard tonight a lot of testimony. I agree with these gentlemen over here who are into statistics. I'm not going to be late for you with statistics. I'm talking about common sense and the issues that face the city of Salisbury. I'm sorry that we have to come to this, but I do believe this ordinance was buried in Avalon, probably of other ordinances. This needed to be dealt with without any other issues regarding what went on tonight. I'm concerned about the idea of trying to exclude Reverend Graham. Everybody should have their opportunity to speak their feelings in religion before the public. That's all I have to say. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, sir.[1702.82][1702.82](APPLAUSE). Next up is Lynn Bratton.
For those who don't know, my name is Lynn Bratton. I currently live in Salisbury on South Boulevard, and I've been a resident in Salisbury since 1973. In addition to being a homeowner and a resident, I have, over the past 45 years, I've purchased other properties, currently own and manage Bratton Rentals and Bratton Properties LLC. I've maintained affordable rent and value my rental clients. I know that they live on budgets and need time to adjust in the face of increases, but rental increases are not a normal occurrence for me. As I look at fire and life safety fee, I do anticipate increases of $25 a month just to cover this cost. Since the proposed fee is set to be part of the July 1, 2023 cycle, this gives me no time to provide notice to my clients of the need for lease modifications. In the past, when rental licenses were increased or property tax assessments caused increases to my taxes, I managed to mitigate it in my own budget and did not pass it on to my clients. This, however, is a much larger amount and will cause a realignment of my leases. For many, this extra $25 will be a hardship added to the 12% rise in water and sewer fees. For For prospective homeowners, I have been told by my own local banker that the two factors could mean the debt-to-income ratios will no longer allow a prospective homeowner to qualify for a loan. I value the service supplied by all the city, fire, EMT, police, and other first responders. I know many of you personally, and I know the cost of supplies and operating expenses have skyrocketed. I know we need to be competitive in the marketplace for the quality workers that Salisbury needs and is come to rely on. But I ask sincerely, what has caused this to become a cataclysmic situation? Who was saying it was okay to eliminate the fees for new construction? And based on whose matrix is? Who authorized the hiring of new employees, even if the positions were nice to have? Or who justified the purchase of new equipment, cars, office suppliers, computer software, and on and on? Again, even if they were nice to have and contributed in some way to the running of an efficient business called the city? A budget shortfall should have been seen long before a new fee was deemed necessary. Is the city financially sound? Do we still have a great bond rating like we've had before? How is all of this affecting those and other issues? What is the money from the sale of real estate and the parking lots going for? The citizens of Salisbury need transparency and answers. Can anyone please answer these questions for us? Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for your service and all that you do for the citizens of Salisbury.
Thank you, Lynn. Next up is Dr. Nicole Hollywood.
Hello, good evening. First off, before I start, the Reverend Franklin Graham's hate speech is well documented. He's been cited by the Southern Poverty Law Center as well as GLAD. I also, based on an employee of the city of Salisbury's comments demeaning others in this community, and that our presence, the presence of my family is offensive and Pride Month is offensive, I'm going to formally recommend we'd be happy to come in and deliver diversity, equity, and inclusion training because it's clearly very desperately needed. My name is Dr. Nicole Hollywood. I'm president of the Board of Salisbury PFLAG. We came to you last week because the city was actively promoting the Tidewater Tour, and we expressed our shock, disbelief, and hurt, and you listened to our concerns. While the event will still move forward, the city is no longer actively promoting the event, an event which will do nothing more than cause pain and further marginalization of our community here in the city of Salisbury, where we actively have individuals sitting on school boards and in elected county offices who cavaught with a coalition of hate mongers that maintain a blog propagating cruel mistruths, purpose to erase and ostracize LGBTQ plus youth in our schools and community. Diversity is one of our most significant community assets, but groups that espouse intolerance and bigotry, such as those led by Franklin Graham and his people, who have a long history of anti-LGBTQ hate speech, create division and trigger conflict within communities and even families. We all recognize that American history is bursting with prejudice and bigotry, and while we have made progress in some areas, racism and homophobia remain rampant. More specifically, LGBTQIA+ rights have been under attack in legislatures, city and county councils, and school board meetings across America, and the eastern shore is no different. While disheartened, we have not lost hope. We also understand that intentionally misleading application was filed with the city, likely an action that's become a practice after every single UK venue dropped Graham in 2020. This, of course, is understandable, as Graham has promoted conversion therapy, applauded Putin's cruel anti-LGBTQ policies, and said same-sex marriage is the work of Satan. This is a teachable moment for us all, where we can unite, condemn all forms of hatred and intolerance, and look fondly towards upcoming events like Juneteenth and the Salisbury Pride Parade and Festival, which is just to move equality forward, creating a more inclusive and welcoming community. My gay son applied to intern for the city of Salisbury, and now I have to worry that the city employs people like the woman over here that called us offensive and an affront to her biblical values. Is that really the city that we want to be? Thank you for your time.
Thanks for hearing all these comments. I'm here to engage with the closing statements of last week's work meeting from Mayor Heath, Councilwoman Gregory, and Councilwoman out in it last week's work meeting. All three expressed deep disappointment over the "God Loves You" event that is to take place on May 4th at the Title Pavilion? Is that what we call that title area? And I believe it was Councilwoman Gregory, you deemed that this group is a hate group, and it would be harmful to certain family members and members of your constituency and everyone's constituency to have Franklin Graham come to spread a message of hope to the residents of Salisbury. And I believe, as it's already been said, that this is because Graham has confidently renounced the actions and status and body of work of the LGBTQIA+ movement community. It was also said that this local body will do what it can to make sure these events don't happen, especially because of so much successful work being done by or for the LGBTQ community. I know that those were only opinions at that point and remarks, but they did seem to have some teeth behind them and an attitude of like, let's get to work on this and make sure this doesn't happen again. So I wanted to engage with some of those things. First, I wanted to ask, who deems what groups are hate groups and what are not? Is the "God Loves You" tour a hate event because Franklin Graham is coming? Franklin Graham leads a group called Samaritan's Purse, which is one of the most accomplishing humanitarian endeavors in world history. They show up for nearly every kind of crisis in almost any type of area. They set up hospitals and help every kind of person, that includes gay, lesbian, transgender people. They help people in any time of need, their darkest hour of need. They set up a hospital in Central Park, New York, at the height of COVID, and they served and tended to people from every walk of life. You could almost say there's not a hurricane, or a flood, or a tornado, or a health crisis that Samaritan's Purse will not show up for. And not only that, they lead the world to supply impoverished children with gifts every single Christmas. They're an incredible ministry, incredible industry of service, and Franklin Graham has been the head of that for many years. And he wants to come to Salisbury to tell people here, to tell all people here, that God loves them. No one is forced to go to the event, but if you go, you're going to hear that God loves And this council, and I'm not sure it's the majority, but last week it was the vocal majority, is more content to have a month-long celebration that honors and glorifies expressions of sexuality, which culminates in a full-day pride event that's kicked off by a drag queen leading children through the streets of downtown. And so if you look and just try and match the two, LGBTQ, Samaritan's Purse, what's been the collective effort of LGBTQ+, what have they worked on, what have they accomplished, seems to revolve around the sexualization of children, the mainstreaming of...
That is not true, that is a lie.
The villainization of any therapy but affirmative therapy, the targeting of socially and psychologically suffering children for mutilating medical experimentation. So that group should be allowed to parade itself through the streets for an entire month, but for one night, for just a couple of hours, this council can't stand the thought of having one of the most accomplished humanitarians in the world come and tell its citizens that God loves them. I understand that his beliefs are narrow, his convictions are narrow. Just, I'll wrap this up in just a second. The other question, though, that I asked was, who establishes what is hate? And the other thing is, when it comes to hurt, what about the hurt that the LGBTQ+IA or IA+ community also brings to families and groups? The strong ideologies of that group, doesn't that include the hurt upon families? What about those families that are wrecked because of moms leaving their families to find herself and become a lesbian? What about those...
Thank you.
What about those parents who don't know what to do when the boy they created by love and brought into the world and raised says, "Stop calling me by the name you gave me"? Doesn't that also hurt them?
Thank you, Mr. Fiori.
So I would just want to say, in an attitude of fairness, it would be unjust to exclude a group like Franklin Graham's evangelistic tour. He wants to promote a message, the only message which saves, which is the message of God's grace come through the gospel of Jesus Christ.
Next up is Lori Jamison.
Hi, my name is Lori Jamison, and I have not ever done anything like this, and I am nervous, but I just want to give you just my opinion on the tour for Franklin Graham. Growing up as a young child, my father and mother listened to Billy Graham when he was on TV back in the day, and I was made to watch it. And sometimes I felt like it was torture, but honestly, it was the beginning of setting the foundation inside of me. When I grew up and moved off the island that I was from, I wanted to taste the world and see, and I got into a lot of bad things. I became a recovering addict. I'm twenty-some years clean. I did a lot of things, but the thing that kept me grounded, the thing that brought me back, was the roots that was given to me by watching the preachers, being taught in the church, being raised with the Bible. And when I heard Franklin Graham was coming, the son of Billy Graham, I was excited, and I go to get myself fed, to help me with my problems. I feel that all they teach is love and acceptance, and they want to teach God to the people. And I just feel like putting a contingency, I'm gonna say, on who can speak and who cannot, I do not agree with that. I think we all should have free speech, and that's just where I'm at. I just wanted to say Franklin Graham, the preachers, the speakers, not all are good, but I can tell you Franklin Graham is good, and all I see is love, and that's what we all need right now, is love. So that's all I have, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Last public comment is Greg Alexander.
I'm here tonight as one of the many voices who live, work, and call Salisbury their home. I am one of the nearly 215,000 citizens who live in the city of Salisbury and the counties of Wycomico, Worcester, Somerset, and Dorchester, of which over 82,000 are people of faith like myself. That's nearly 40% of your local constituency. We are business owners, skilled workers, community leaders, civic employees, farmers, police, fire, and EMT personnel, along with many other walks of life. If this council chooses to go forward in enacting legislation that is in fundamental contradiction to the rights enumerated in our founding legal framework, the law of the land, the United States Constitution, which plainly states that Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble. If that is your intended course of action, then you must allow for the same erasure of rights towards any group whatsoever, whenever petitioned from here forward and in perpetuity. Otherwise, you will be in direct violation of Title 18 USC, United States Code, Section 241, conspiracy against rights. This statute makes it unlawful for two or more persons to conspire to injure, oppress, threaten, or intimidate any person of any state, territory, or district in the free exercise, or enjoyment of any right or privilege secured to him or her by the Constitution or the laws of the United States, or because of his/her having exercised the same. The opportunity for equality shall not be mistaken for the outcome of equality, especially when it contradicts the highest laws of our nation. No rights have been stripped of anyone up to this point, but if this legislation goes forward, it will do so under the flag of authoritarianism, clearly defined as a form of government in which the governing body has absolute or almost absolute control. Typically, this control is maintained by force, and little heed is paid to public opinion or the judicial system. The public opinion referred to directly correlates with the representation of 40% of the local citizenry, while the judicial system aforementioned refers to Amendment 1 of the United States Constitution, to be backed with federal civil rights statutes, including but not limited to the conspiracy against rights, as well as a strong case that can be argued under the deprivation of rights under Color of Law statute. These codes are federal law, and being so carry tangible legal repercussions for their violation. As such, this matter is and shall be forwarded to the American Center for Law and Justice, as well as its legal partners, to determine if United States Code is being violated, and to determine the next step in legal recourse. Beecher said, "Liberty is the soul's right to breathe, and when it cannot take a long breath, laws are girdled too tight." I strongly urge the council to immediately and permanently shelve the matter in consideration so as not to infringe on the federally protected rights of over 82,000 local citizens. Thank you.
Next up is Daniel Beavis.
I live and work here in Wycomico County. My wife and I both served honorably in the United States Army. I served for two years. When I joined the Army, I swore an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States, to defend our religious and our freedom of speech, to defend our rights. And now I hear of potential legislation that would take away these fundamental rights. I understand some of the concerns regarding to what extent people have the right to freedom of speech. If he is threatening violence against the LGBT+ community, then I can understand bringing in legal recourse. But he has never, at one time that I am aware of, vowed or called for violence against the LGBT+ community. He's called for nothing but peace and love. This book is what he preaches, that preaches nothing but love. Thank you.
Back on the agenda, next up is motion to approve ordinance number 2802 for first reading.
Second. Thank you. Ordinance number 2802, an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, for the period July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period, and establishing the appropriation for the water and sewer, parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. Be it ordained by the city of Salisbury that the amounts listed in Schedule A, operating budget appropriations, are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, to fund operations for the city of Salisbury, Maryland. fund operations for the City of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule B, Capital Project Appropriations, are hereby appropriated for capital projects. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury that the amounts listed in Schedule C, Anticipated Grant Expenditures, are hereby appropriated for the grants listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memoranda in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained that, one, the levy be and the same be hereby set at one dollar point one three three two cents per one hundred of assessed valuation for all commercial real property, properties assigned by S-Stat Land Use Codes CR, CC, C, CA, I, and A at point nine eight three two cents per one hundred of assessed valuation of all other real property at three dollars and fifty-one cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for all personal property categorized as utilities, and at two dollars and forty cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for all other personal properties subject to taxation by the City of Salisbury for general fund purposes, including debt services, debt service purposes exclusive of revenues derived from the Water and Sewer Fund for debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities, and A, all taxes levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July one, two thousand and twenty-three, and shall be due and payable as specified in Title fourteen of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended. And as referenced in ordinance number two eight zero six, there are three attachments. They are Schedule A, the Operating Budget Appropriations, Schedule B, the Capital Project Appropriations, and Schedule C, the City Fiscal Year twenty-three Appropriations of Grant-Funded Expenditures.
Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number two eight zero two for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. This is the first reading, which means it will allow our city clerk to begin the publications that have to go into the paper so that we can stay on schedule. There will be a second reading, and we will schedule that once she has that scheduled.
The public hearings.
For the public hearings.
May eighth.
May eighth, okay, so May eighth is the public hearing. Next up, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two eight zero three for first reading.
So moved.
Ordinance number two eight zero three, in ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to amend water and sewer rates to increase rates by twelve percent and making said changes effective for all bills dated October one, two thousand and twenty-three and thereafter, unless and until subsequently revised or changed, whereas the water and sewer rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four budget of the City of Salisbury and appropriations thereby made and established for the purposes of water and sewer departments. Those rates are set forth in Section one, the proposed rates are in bold. Council President, would you like me to go through and read each and every one of those rates, or should we just defer to what is outlined in the agenda?
I will defer to you, since you're the legal expert.
I believe the record has been created, it's published online, these folks are here. I don't think we need to read each and every one of them into the record.
So with that, any questions or comments from the council?
I have a question for clarification, just, so moving this forward just opens it up to a public hearing. It does not put this in, this is a proposal, it's not, it puts it in action for the public to make
It's not second reading, it's just public hearing.
Correct.
Right, right.
I just wanted to make that clarification.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a couple of comments, just reiterating some of the statements we've heard here. I really do think that this is a major concern for some of the residents we have here on a fixed income, just as putting that out there is maybe a discussion that this on top of the fee, I'm a little bit concerned about some of the constituents that I have here in my district that are on a fixed income or just, you know, living paycheck to paycheck.
Noted, and I think we are all hearing the same thing from our constituents as well, but we will continue these discussions with administration over the course of the next few weeks. But like I said, this puts it in motion for us to
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing.
Which is May
And then it's still not final because that'll, there'll be more discussions. So call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number two eight zero three for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair will vote aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two eight zero four for first reading.
So moved.
Show.
Second.
Ms. Jackson.
Ordinance number two eight zero four, in ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to set fees for FY two thousand and twenty-four and thereafter, unless and until subsequently revised or changed, whereas the fees charged by the city are reviewed and then revised in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four budget of the City of Salisbury, and whereas the fee amounts set forth in FY two thousand and twenty-four fee schedule attached here to and incorporated herein as Exhibit one, identify and list all fee amounts to be charged and otherwise assessed by the City of Salisbury for the period of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four in accordance with the adoption of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four budget of the city. Whereas some fee amounts to be charged and otherwise assessed by the City of Salisbury in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three may have been inadvertently omitted from the FY two thousand and twenty-three fee schedule attached here to and incorporated herein as Exhibit one, and any fee amount not listed in FY two thousand and twenty-three fee schedule shall be and remain the fee amount set forth in the City of Salisbury Municipal Code. Section one of ordinance two eight oh four reads, "The fee amounts set forth in the FY twenty-four fee schedule attached here to as Exhibit one and incorporated herein as if fully set forth in this Section one are hereby adopted by the Council of the City of Salisbury, and furthermore, the fee amounts set forth in FY twenty-four fee schedule shall supersede the corresponding fee amount set forth in the City of Salisbury Municipal Code until one or more of such fee amounts are subsequently amended." And those fee amounts are set forth in Exhibit one, which is FY two thousand and twenty-four fee schedule, and that's, again, part of the agenda and has been posted online for the public.
Questions or comments from the council?
Again, this, this, oh, go ahead, Ava.
No, you go ahead.
Okay, again, I just want to make this clear, so moving this forward puts it into the public hearing for May eighth, so it's not that it's approved, it's a vote to move it forward to the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
She spoke on the other side.
I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number two eight zero four for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right, thank you, Ms. Boucher.